Welcome to the Sunset Park Podcast. I'm your host, Rob Aguilar. I hope that you're having a great Monday and that you're having a great summer and that you're staying safe and healthy. Today, we have a great guest. We have Whitney Hu, who is running for City Council in District 38. And we're going to talk to her about the issues that she feels are important in the district, why she is running, and how she got involved in community work. So let's bring on Whitney. Whitney, welcome to the podcast.
Thank you so much for having me.
So Whitney, you are running in the 38th District. Such a big step, such a big commitment. What motivated you to run?
That's a really good question. I think for me, part of the motivation to run was really seeing a lot of the changes that were happening, especially around me. I live on 4th Avenue and 20th Street. I've been here for close to a decade. This is my neighborhood and where I want to spend the rest of my life and to have a family and to continue to live here. But I think what we've all felt is that there are a lot of changes that are happening. A lot of the small businesses around me have closed. A lot of my neighbors have been forced out of the neighborhood. And to see that sort of displacement start and to know about the love that I have for Sunset Park and for Red Hook and for the surrounding areas, recognizing that we need somebody who's going to come into office and really hit the ground running, because we're in the fight of our lives to maintain this community and to maintain our homes. It was a moment of recognizing the sort of tenacity and understanding the way that the council works and the legislation that we need to bring and to be bold even on a citywide level. To be honest, I've gone back and forth on whether or not I should run, but especially with everything that's been going on, I think it's at a moment where we need to be bringing in some really big, bold, progressive and radical changes. And it came to the moment of making sure that those are being heard and knowing that the work that needs to be done was of a crucial amount that made me realize that I was willing to step up to that plate. And it was something I felt incredibly passionate about and that I wanted to spend my morning, afternoons, evenings focused on these issues and putting, you know, some really hard work into it. And so I decided to make the big decision to run for the council.
So you said you've been in the neighborhood for about 10 years. How did you pick Sunset Park as a place you wanted to move to? Did you know the neighborhood before moving here? Were you just looking for a place and saw this thing and said, hey, this looks like a good place to... What moved you to come to this neighborhood and settle down here?
My dad would say being stubborn. So I moved around my entire life with my family. We lived in Shanghai. We lived in California. We lived in Texas. I went to school in Iowa. I've always had a very nomadic lifestyle. And you've known me since I was a kid. I hated it. We moved a lot because of my dad's job and his work. And I've always wanted to have a place that felt like my own and to feel like home. And so my dad, in a very typical West Coast fashion, actually hates New York City. He told me the one place he never wanted me to go to was New York City. And like any good rebellious first immigrant born child, you come to New York City. And I stayed with a friend who actually lived in the apartment that I'm still in. I crashed on her couch. My first restaurant to eat on was actually on my block on Fifth and 20th at El Continental. And it felt like home in a way that most of my life I've never felt at home. And that was why I decided to stick here and then to stay here was really because I felt like I had a community and I knew my neighbors and I knew my block and I knew everything and the energy of the city and everything that you come to New York City to find. It all made sense.
So what are some of the places you lived at? Or you said you've lived in many other places. So it's really cool and it's, as a lifelong Sunset Park resident, it feels really cool. It validates, right? Why, for example, I've stayed here such a long time, that you've lived everywhere? And out of all the places that you've lived, you decided to settle down in Sunset Park?
I think, so the joke that I have is, so my family is actually in LA, which is another good blend of Chinese and Mexican cultures coming together. And I could find that replicated in Sunset Park, because in terms of food I want to eat, it often veers between, like I want dumplings one day and I want tacos the other. And food is like the low language of immigrant families. And so being able to have access to grocery stores that had that and restaurants was really big for me. I also think it's just the vibe of, I mean, it's the sort of people that you meet within the community too. Like, I love that my neighbors are super in tuned with what's happening locally, but also what's happening across the city. And it's just this feeling of community that it's hard to find in other parts of the city. You know, I have friends who feel way more transient when they're in, you know, I mean, they can also have a lot of conversation on gentrification, but in other neighborhoods, even across Brooklyn. And when you're in Sunset Park and you're walking around, you don't feel that. It definitely feels like a hustle and bustle. People who've been there for a very long time are still here. And I think it's that sort of immigrant and lifelong New Yorkers and everything mixed in, like gives you a lot of pride for the neighborhood.
Nice. And out of all the things that this neighborhood has to offer, if you could pick one thing that you can say, you know, I really love this about Sunset Park, what would that be?
I love...
Other than the food?
Other than the food. I love sitting in Sunset Park. It's one of the best views in the city. I mean, I think it's why developers are always looking into Sunset Park. And there's nothing better than sitting in the park and just seeing all the different groups and entities come together. And also, like, you know, even to give Bush Terminal Park some credit, like, just the views that you get and to realize like exactly where you're situated in New York City, like, there's nothing better than it. I'm really sad, because for a long time I used to brag, like, from even my apartment, you could see the Statue of Liberty. It's now blocked by a hotel. But that day, you were able to see it. And there's nothing that kind of reminds you when you're looking at the Statue of Liberty and you're in an immigrant neighborhood. And it just like really grounds you in a really lovely way.
It is an amazing view. I can sit at the park and sit there for hours and never get bored. I can go two or three days back to back within my walks throughout the neighborhood and sit on a bench and look at the tower, the church tower by St. Michael's, or look over at the city skyline and never get bored. And it's amazing. I used to go there with my parents as a child, and now I go there with my kids. And it's an amazing view, something that you can't get anywhere else in the city, something about just sitting in that park.
When you're walking down 5th Avenue and you can like see the bridges on a really good day if you go far enough. And like, there's just so much of the area where you just walk around and it really just situates you. And we're sandwiched between so many green spaces too. Like, we have Sunset Park, we have Bush Terminal, we also have like Greenwood Cemetery right around the corner. So just some really great places to sit and ponder.
So how long after moving here did you decide you wanted to get involved in a neighborhood and work and do all these different types of work that you're involved with in the community and all the volunteer work that you do? When did that start after moving to Sunset Park?
So I moved here when I was young. And then I actually worked for a council member, Lander, in the district over. You know, working for Councilman Lander, it was a really great view into what a council office could look like, it could be. You know, he's been in office for three terms. I think he really understands his neighborhood and his district like no other. Like, even as a staffer and you were like focused on an issue, you could never like get one over him. And it made me, you know, it was always a joke in the office that I was always the district over. I didn't live in the district. And it made me really curious for my own. And so I was actually, so there's a part of Windsor Terrace, which means Brad House constituents in CB7. So I started attending like Community Board 7 meetings. I'd be like lurking in the background and having to give remarks. It's like a really young person going up there and being really intimidated. And it made me realize how, as much as, you know, Park City was very lovely, I didn't feel the same sort of attachment as when I went to like CB7 meetings. I then worked for a national nonprofit, and I was traveling all the time. I was spending, you know, like a good like 60% of my time like on the road. And there's nothing like being depressed in a hotel room in Wisconsin and missing home that you sort of realize you wanted to restructure the way your life was. And so I quit my job and went into freelancing and consulting in order to be more active in my own neighborhood. And it really helped me redefine my core. It made me realize where my values were and that I realized real fast that if I wanted to actually build a future here, that a lot of things were going to have to change. Or the people that I was organizing with who are primarily very young, like, we wouldn't have our futures in Sunset Park. We wouldn't be able to afford it. We wouldn't be able to stay here. We were going to be displaced out. And so that really helped me sort of recenter myself and put my like actual beliefs and where I wanted to spend my time like into focus.
What was one of the first things you worked on after arriving in the neighborhood and you got involved in the community?
Yeah, so early on, I started volunteering, helping with the Sunset Park ICE watches that took place. And also hoping to do a lot of conversations around the industry city rezoning. And so kind of through those two organizing aspects, I was able to get better situated in. I had a good idea of where things were just from like attending CB7 meetings, but being a little bit more on the background and arriving as a staffer versus being able to come in with my own opinions and views and being able to organize where I wanted to. And so those were sort of the two first functions. And then have worked with some street safety stuff and most recently doing some of the COVID-19 responses with like food and primarily working through mutual aid stuff.
Now, a lot of, I know that our current council member received a lot of criticism when he first came on because he was from somewhere else, right? And a lot of people felt that he didn't really understand the issues of the neighborhood, because he wasn't a longtime Sunset Park resident or even a longtime Red Hook resident. Do you think that, do you feel comfortable that 10 years in the neighborhood gives you enough insight to what needs to be handled and what the community needs and what kind of representation they need in City Hall?
Yeah, that's something I'm always evaluating in myself. I mean, there's like two aspects of this. I'm, you know, I'm young. And so moving here at the current time that I will, knowing that by the time I reach ages of like most candidates when they decide to run, I will have been here for the 20 and 30 some years that a lot of folks typically run at. And so I'm starting my mark in a little early, because I'm really invested in making sure that when my children are here, that they are safe and that they're protected. And knowing that that is the, that's the legacy that I'm working towards and I'm working for. And if anything, I feel like it creates more of a hustle in me, because I am working to make Sunset Park and Red Hook and District 38 a district that is safe and protected and that people are able to decide to stay. I also have a lot of conversations around some of the anti-migrant languages that we use when we talk about who is native and who is not native. You know, it's something that I'm still doing a lot of learning around. And I think especially with the recent protests, we're having conversations about what it means to be on stolen land and what it means, especially for immigrant communities, on who we get to decide is from and is not from there. You know, Sunset Park has seen a lot of different iterations of communities who have lived there. We have a budding Fujianese community that's moving in. And I think the bigger conversations should be around who gets to move and who gets to stay, what does investment look like? Because I think there are people who might want to move but are unable to move. And I think there's a level of privilege about who gets to move and that should definitely be explored. But I think when it comes to settling down on a home, it's, I have been here for 10 years. That is more than some of the other candidates who are running. And it is equal to some of the others who are older who have been here. And then hopefully, in times when I am older, I will have been able to say like, I've been here for 20 years or 30 years. But it's also, I want to make sure too, that when I build my cabinet and when I'm having conversations and my staff, that it is reflective though to people who've been there for a very long time and making sure that people who feel very as committed to Sunset Park and to Red Hook as I am, do also have a pathway into my office. And knowing that they get in conversations with me. And I will say, I don't want to like, I will say like, I'm a very good listener and I want to make sure that people feel heard and understood and seen and to know that we're all in this fight together.
Now, you touched about people moving in and moving out and who gets to move in. And we can't help but to bring to topic gentrification. And that is such a hot topic for this neighborhood for years, right? I want to say, the last seven, eight years, whenever you say Sunset Park, whenever you mention Sunset Park, right behind it is the topic of gentrification. And some people think it's a great thing. Other people think it's a terrible thing, that it displaces people, it increases the cost of living here. Rents are extremely high. I know of a lot of people who have moved out. And then they decide, well, you know what, where I moved to wasn't necessarily where I wanted to be. I want to come back. And now they can't afford to come back. I hear stories of people who just can't afford it anymore. The landlords have increased the rent to an exaggerated amount where they can't afford it. Add to that, the current pandemic and people being out of work and not being able to afford rent because unemployment benefits are not enough to, you either buy food or pay the rent. So what is your view or your stance on gentrification? Can it be slowed down? Should we slow it down? Should we just let things run its course? What is your take on that?
We should not let things run its course. Part of what I'm working on is a value set of housing proposals and gentrification work. It's something that I believe very strongly about is where I feel like this current council and councils in the past have really allowed real estate developers to restructure and redefine what a community is worth. And then you offer communities really horrible deals, being like, well, if you want nice things, then it means you have to give away X amount. You have to rezone with a developer, because communities of color don't deserve nice things unless there's a proximity to wealth. And wealth often means it's based within this idea of capitalism and honestly, like white supremacy when it comes down to it. Communities that are worth more are always white and are not of color. Something I really want to push forward is two different things. It's a lot of preventative measures to make evictions a lot harder, to really do a lot of protections for folks who are facing harassment from their landlords, often illegally. It's something we don't see as much on the local level, because a lot of that is tied into city agencies. And when we're representing a community that is often with a lot of immigrants and folks who are undocumented, there's a lot of mistrust of the government. And so giving that a lot of power to like local tenant associations and nonprofits is one part of it. The second part of it is regulation, which is something that a lot of people step away from. And it's something where we've seen the council legislate policy based on values, but with no teeth whatsoever to make them enforceable. And so I'm working on a series of bill proposals with folks to let me know whether or not it's legal or whether or not this is a state level. But I think we're finding ways where we can actually slow down as a right developers who come in. You know, we're seeing this with like Glassbell Trucking facilities, which are also bringing a lot of cars into Sunset Park, which is an area that is already dealing with high levels of asthma and a high level of accidents on the streets, where we can actually decide and just slow down developers who are trying to build rapidly. We can do replicating a bill that Senator Myrie has on the state level, where we will give, whenever a landlord is trying to sell, like we can give first dibs to nonprofits and to individuals to purchase their buildings. And then working on a series of different ways to actually allow people to become owners of their apartments and of their buildings, building a lot more supportive measures to allow co-ops to come in and to allow owners to figure out how to build those co-ops, because I think it's something where a lot of white neighborhoods are able to access that because of understanding and of means. And so what does it look like to subsidize those? What does it look like to provide support? Because I think the best way to fight evictions is to have people to own their own homes. And it becomes a lot harder, especially when you enter pandemic mode. And we're seeing that renters are way more vulnerable than homeowners. And so I want to work on a series of comprehensive bills that are going to really allow people to decide where they want to stay and to give them that sort of financial stability to stay. And then again, making sure that when we do build up, that we're actually building, and I hate saying the word affordable, because these affordable units that we're seeing that are being built are like $3,000 and they're affordable. And you're like, affordable for who? And I think making sure that we're having really meaningfully like affordable and like that could even just be looking at what people are able to pay. I mean, that's, you know, looking at a lot more like Section 8 housing vouchers, making sure that those are funded and actually given more money. Because right now, I think per person, it's actually a really, really hard rate to use in current markets. Like, people aren't able to use their Section 8 housing vouchers. So I think that's like a mix of some of the work that I want to do to help people stay in their homes. And then in terms of like anti-gentrification with like licensing of making sure that bad landlords aren't able to repeatedly purchase land, of making sure, I really want to push commercial rent stabilization, because there's two ways gentrification works. Either you displace the people or you displace the businesses and the ecosystem that supports the people. And that's what you're seeing in Red Hook around, the Red Hook houses. Like, their bank is gone, their grocery store is gone. A lot of the businesses that would support folks in the Red Hook houses are no longer able to be there. They just lost a giant laundry mat. That's a different way that gentrification comes in to displace people. So a commercial rent stabilization to happen, so we don't lose the amazing restaurants and small businesses and delis and bodega owners. They also need immediate COVID-19 relief. A lot of the small businesses in my neighborhood are hurting bad. I know my bodega owner is $20,000 in debt. So working on that immediate relief through COVID, but also making sure that we have long-term support systems to keep people in their homes and to keep small businesses in place.
And we definitely can't talk about gentrification without talking about the giant that we have in Sunset Park, Industry City. How do, how do we make them be a good neighbor, right? Because they're not going anywhere. They're here. They've invested a lot of money into their space. They have a lot of businesses in the building, a lot of office space. And there's people that love Industry City, and there's people that hate Industry City with a passion. How do, how do we mesh that relationship with the neighborhood and Industry City? Because I don't think they're going away anytime soon, right? How do we make that work so that the community isn't hurt by Industry City?
Yep. Industry City is like, it's a tricky one. They're there, they're in the space. We could have a lot of conversations about what does it look like to sell public land like that to private developers. But that is a conversation that we can have in hindsight and can't move it right now. With the rezoning, and something that I think people need to understand is that we're not saying that Industry City needs to cease to exist. They can't adapt, they can't like move their current model. And that rezoning process that they're trying to push is actually happening through the Uniform Land Process, which is really meant for community boards to be able to weigh whether or not like a neighbor changes their, you know, the exterior of the building or to add on like a rooftop or to change their driveway. It wasn't ever meant to handle one of the largest rezonings to come through the year of the process. There is a time limit. It's a lot, it's a lot of onus on a unpaid community board to go through hours and hours and hours of rezoning papers that an entity like Industry City is able to pay people to do. And I think that process is really where we come into whether or not they were going to be good actors to begin with. They pushed for their application right before the holidays. They kept hotels within the rezoning application. And a lot of the numbers that they're currently using around jobs is based off of getting these hotels and these like retail opportunities to open. They're not manufacturing, they're not small businesses. It's going to be really changing the demographic. And this is a wider conversation that needs to be happened. And something that I'm really pushing for is a comprehensive rezoning. I think too often rezoning processes are led by developers deciding to reshape a neighborhood versus having a community come through and really evaluating the entity and the entire waterfront and looking how everything plays together. Because if you get these piecemeal rezonings, you kind of end up like Williamsburg, where they rezoned all these little micro areas. And then they realized, oh, we don't have enough schools. Like, can our utilities actually support all this? And you get a really dysfunctional feeling neighborhood and a lot of gentrification can definitely come in through there. I think that needs to happen in ways that are enforceable. I think realistically, you know, Industry City was refinanced by Blackstone, and that is money that we should be really suspicious of at all times. For as much as they will talk about innovation, about small businesses, you know, Blackstone is somebody that the United Nations has put out as causing and helping to increase the US housing crisis. They were behind, you know, the Amazon forest fires. They were funding the Trump administration and Mitch McConnell especially. That is money that is really dangerous. And they've invested a billion dollars into our waterfront between Industry City and Liberty Industry Review Plaza. So it's going to take a lot of oversight and the next council member making sure that that investment isn't going to come back for Blackstone through the displacement of Sunset Park residents. I think that's a lot of holding Industry City accountable to their current small businesses that are inside and the light manufacturing that they still retain. And making sure that the waterfront and the manufacturing businesses around them are able to stay safe and to keep actually having the light manufacturing that we boast on the waterfront. I think it's going to be a really complicated space to move forward in. But I think it's something that we should be cautious of, that Industry City doesn't want to stay in its current look and feel. I was actually there this past Sunday and you see families running around and people are kind of walking and shopping. They don't want to stay like that. And I think it's something that we really need to push back and really, you know, make sure that those small businesses that are current there do also stay protected. And I really think it's pushing to see their finance numbers. They've been keeping them incredibly private, so their investors know how much they're making and how much they're not making. And it's something that we've been told we'll only be able to see if we sue them. And so I think, once we see those finance numbers, I think we'll be able to kind of see exactly where they are and how much is malarkey.
But so you think that there definitely is a way to keep them in check? Like, there are things that the City Council in City Hall can do, that our local council member here can do, to kind of keep them at bay, keep them in check, to make sure that their practices or the different to make sure that their practices or the different moves they want to do or whether it's rezoning or whatever, that they are kept in line so that the community is not hurt by their actions? Is that a realistic thing? Or are we far fetched in thinking that we can kind of control what happens in the waterfront with Industry City?
I think it's realistic. I think it takes, you know, we do have like a layman's committee. We do have the ability. I mean, like I think the part that people forget about the city council is that it's just as much as oversight as it is being a legislative body. And I think there are a lot of reforming bills that we can push forward to make sure that we don't just say, all right, well, something is as of right and it's hands up and we don't touch it anymore. I think there's a lot of conversations being happening around making sure that we have racial impact studies that we're looking at like environmental reviews. Like I think there is a lot of different ways that we could be able to see more oversight and to actually ask for a clearer picture, especially when Industry City is asking for a community to negotiate without showing any of the numbers that they would be showing their investors. And they're asking us to invest our waterfront property, our futures, our climate, our streets. They're asking us to invest. They're literally asking for a public street to just be closed off without the same numbers that they would give their investors. Like even if I'm taking this from like a more like radical business standpoint, it's not a deal that I think any investor would take. And I don't think we should demand our residents to take it. It would take the council standing up really strong. You know, we've really seen Richie Torres, Donovan Richards, like Carnegie all talk about these 20,000 jobs that they can't bear to lose. But nobody's ever asked like, are those jobs well-paying? Are those jobs unionized? Are those jobs even going to go to people within Sunset Park? Who, what are those jobs?
Yeah, and those are things that when Industry Cities ask for those figures or those numbers, they haven't been able to produce them, I think. Like out of all those jobs that they keep talking about, how many of those jobs go to Sunset Park residents? And that's something that they can't seem to answer. So obviously, there's a lot of issues in the neighborhood that need to be addressed. But if you could pinpoint one, let's say you're fortunate enough to be our next council member. What issue do you want to take on day one from taking office? What issue do you think you need to handle on that first day in office?
I think for me, the way that I sort of view holistically what a council member can do, especially on the local level, is looking at reinvestment and where we need a lot of structural integrity, so to say. I really do believe that our democracy starts on the ground level, that we are looking at grassroots movements and that, you know, the way people feel even in their day-to-day will really impact the way that they vote, the way that they view the world. And so for me, day one, what I will be doing is, I mean, hopefully doing up, leading up towards there, is really coming up with a District 38 plan and moving forward. I think especially in to be clear around housing and around anti-gentrification. I think those are the issues that are impacting not just Sunset Park, but also Red Hook and the surrounding areas that are all within our district. I think we're in an area where real estate is going to be really paying attention to this race because of the views that we just bragged about and all the things that people are sort of vying for. Like this is the district that I think real estate has a lot of interest in. And I think right now they're testing out the waters already by pushing back on Munchakka with this Industry City rezoning and putting up three revenue real estate paid candidates to see how much they can push and to see how vulnerable we are. I think the second thing I would focus on would be making sure that our small businesses are protected too. I think we're seeing a real bad sickness come in, especially on Fifth Avenue, where small businesses are not going to be able to stay and are really, even prior to COVID, were unable to pay their rent. And then I think the third thing I would definitely, you know, it's, I feel like it's all at once, but would be schools. I think that is an issue that I'm really concerned about, especially considering that a lot of our schools are within D-15, which includes parks and school numbers. And I have a feeling that Red Hook and Sunset Park are very much undercounted and are not as visibly seen because they're tied in with some really wealthy schools that are performing at different rates. I think even with the fact that we're not included in free pre-K for 3K is an example of that, because we're in D-15, they don't think there's as much need. Although we know that our families in Sunset Park and Red Hook especially would really benefit with having their children also having access to 3K at an earlier age.
Now, there are other candidates for District 38. And I'm sure you know them all pretty well, would you say? So let's say, for example, you weren't running, right? And you had to support one of the other candidates. If you, if you weren't running and you had to support someone else, who would you, who would you back if Whitney was not in the race?
Well, luckily, there's ranked choice voting. So I would say I would support both Rodrigo and Alexa. I just won't tell you who would be one or two. But I will say, I mean, I adore both of them. They're both really wonderful and I have organized with both of them and have, you know, and I would feel if I didn't win, it was like the end of the world. Like luckily, there's no like horrible incumbent that we're all fighting against. I think we're just pitching different visions and opportunities and styles for what this council seat could do. I'm the only one running with council experience. And so I would hope that with me not winning, that either they're going to be willing to have those conversations with me because I definitely think that there's a lot of need and necessity to also be thinking about the way that you will be playing in the overall city-wide scheme because of the way the council is currently set up. If the speaker doesn't like you, you will get nothing in the community, which is really horrific. And making sure that we have a good speaker with a good vision for not just Sunset Park, but for the entire city is going to be really critical and crucial.
Awesome. Whitney, this was a lot of fun. It was great getting to know more about you, about your background, about the work that you've done in the community. I personally look forward to this race. I agree with you. Rodrigo, Alexa, yourself are great community activists and that the community would do very well with any of you. And it's going to be a super tough choice and which makes this race very interesting. And I think the entire city will be watching to see who our next council member will be. We wish you the best. Thank you so much. This is definitely not the last time you'll be here. As we get closer to the race, to the election, we'll bring you back on and we'll kind of catch up and see what's going on then. But thank you so much for taking the time from your very busy schedule, from helping this community so much, and I'm grateful for your time. Thank you.
No, thank you so much for having me.